Meeting of the North Rock Planning Commission to order, please. Welcome everyone to a brand-new year 2019. We hope that all things in the city get done well and properly. We hope brand-new projects come in. And everybody, Santa brings everybody what they wanted to start with. Okay? Please call Row Tim.
Banks.
President.
Belasco. Chambers.
Present.
Dietz.
Here.
Foster. Phillips.
Here.
Wallace. White.
Here.
Chairman Clifton.
Here.
Move to excuse those not present.
Motion made and seconded. Excuse those commissioners not present. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Let me give you a reminder to please turn your cellphones off. And if you do come and speak, please come to the podium and speak into the microphone. You have been submitted a copy of the minutes from our previous meetings. Are there any additions or corrections?
Move for approval.
Motion made and seconded. They be approved as submitted. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. If you are here for a subdivision review of McConnell addition at 3609 MacArthur Drive that has been withdrawn, so will not be heard at the meeting today, you may be excused or you're welcome to stay with us. Mr. Don Chambers, Chairman of our Development Review Committee.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes.
I've got a couple items to add.
Yes, sir.
Under that, sorry. Fire marshal just called and said he wouldn't be able to make the meeting. He got called to a fire out west, so he's going out there. So he said he apologizes for not making the meeting, but if you notice, he's trying to make all the meetings.
Okay.
So he was planning on being here and couldn't make it.
Very good.
And also want to announce, Tim has been promoted to Assistant Director starting this year.
Oh, well, congratulations, Tim.
So I'll make sure everybody knew that, so you can Steve call him. Not me anymore.
All right, well, very good.
So stop calling you.
No.
Very good. Well, congratulations, Tim. We're glad to have you aboard, although you have, yeah, although you have been with us awhile. Go ahead, Mr. Chambers.
Yes, Development Review Committee met and considered item SD 2019-1, Central Arkansas I 440 Business Park Lot 1, Lot 8BR1, 8, excuse me, Lot 8R1 and Lot 8R2. Replatent site found review in office building located at 1,000 Fiber Optic Drive. The applicant was present and agreed to items 1 through 11 and subsections, and with that, Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Motion made that this application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments, many of the commissioners? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That concludes our Development Review Committee report. We'll move right into our public hearings. Number one is rezon case number 2019-1 to amend an existing PUD to allow foreign acupuncture business instead of an engineering firm on property located at 214 West Fifth Street. Is the applicant here?
I'm here.
You want to come up? Give us your name, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chambers.
Yes, I'm abstaining because I live across the street, but I have not received notice. Do you have evidence of notice?
Oh, yes, we were provided the green certified mail slips.
Can you show me the one where it was mailed to me?
Yeah, right now.
Please, because I did not receive notice.
Go ahead, give us your name again.
My name is Chris Kent.
Yes, sir. And tell us what you're wanting to do here.
I'm, I currently have the house at 214 West Fifth under contract, and what we'd like to do is change the existing zoning of PUD from, it specifically states that it can only be used as an engineering firm right now, to acupuncture business in that space.
Okay. This is the property that was a PUD, was granted back how long ago? Mr. Spencer, do you remember?
It was one of our first, so it's been ten years ago.
Back a long time ago. It was, I believe it was in 2002.
Yeah.
2002.
So longer than ten years.
And it was used for a living and office for an engineering firm, and I assume that Mr. Kent is trying to purchase the property.
That is correct.
And is trying to use it for the same purpose, except it will not be an engineering firm, it will be an acupuncture.
That is correct.
Okay. We will make sure on our notifications.
It's got your name on it. It's got the address of 14. And then it's got, here's his mail.
I understand, that's okay. Is that satisfactory, Mr. Chambers?
Just, just for the record, even if he had not sent me notice, in all, in reality, I did know about the project, so it's not like I was uninformed. I would have waved notice.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments, many of the commissioners? Any comments into the office? Okay, on the application, please call the Row. Yes.
Belasco.
Yes.
Chambers.
Abstain.
Dietz.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Your application did pass. Get with Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what to do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next item of business is rezon case number 2019-2 to rezon property from 7101 and 7205, Highway 70, from C3 to I3, and to amend the land use plan from light industrial to heavy industrial to allow for a scrap metal recycling company. Is the applicant here?
Good afternoon. I'm Scott Hillburn with Hillburn Law Firm, representing the applicant here today, and we run an existing metal recycling plant next door to the subject properties and are asking that the zoning be changed to I3 to accommodate the expansion of that facility.
Okay. Mr. Chambers.
What is the name of the business next door that has the operation that's absorbing this land?
Yes, it's, well, it's Meridale Corporation and Metro Scrap Metals is the, is the actual company.
The properties that are existing there are auto salvage yards, both of them, are they not?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Any comments, many of the commissioners? On the application, please call the Row.
Banks. Belasco.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Your application did pass. See Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what your next step would be. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Next case is case number three, a conditional use, 2019-1, to allow a car lot in a C4 zone located at 1803 Highway 161. Would the applicant please come up?
Good afternoon. My name is Dennis Doakes.
Mr. Doakes, you were before the Design Review Committee and told what you wanted to do there. Have you been given a copy of the recommended conditions?
Yes, sir.
Do you agree with those?
Yes, sir.
We'll take care of those and do those. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor on the application, please call the Row.
Banks. Belasco.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Dietz. Phillips.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Your application did pass. See Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what your next step would be.
Thank you.
Our next item of business is special use case number 2019-1 to allow an upholstered business in a C3 zone, property located at 2400 Pike Avenue. Is the applicant here?
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Edward Martinez.
Okay, Mr. Martinez. Mr. Spencer, have we received any comments on this?
We have not received any phone calls and support or opposition.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Have you seen a copy of the conditions that have been recommended?
Yes, sir.
And do you agree with those?
Yes, sir.
Okay. On the application, please call the Row.
Banks.
Yes.
Belasco.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Your application did pass. See Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what your next step would be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item of business is a public comments. Anyone?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
How you doing, Chairman? My name is Justin McCowen. We got here, sorry for my tardiness, we got here and then we noticed that my request for my lot on the McConnell addition of the Reesers Building on MacArthur Avenue, or MacArthur Drive, I'm the owner-operator of Mixed Barbecue, and Mr. Butler, Jim Butler, came the last time trying to get this through for me. We've been in business there for 20-plus years here in North Little Rock, and feel like we're a staple of the Levy community, and, you know, just continuing to grow our business. So I went into contract to buy the whole Reesers property there. I was unable to come up with the funds to the whole thing, so I was able to find somebody to purchase it, and in return, I got my little square. So, right now, I'm at about $8,000 in lawyer fees and survey fees, just to try to get my little square lined out. You know, that would just, we've always wanted to buy the whole property. Right now, it's listed, you know, it's always up in the air. Somebody could tell me to move, you know, some of my rent could go up, anything like that, and, you know, Mr. Butler's saying that y'all are not going to approve my subdivision little lot there. I know it may not conform, or may not look right on paper, but I'm just trying to figure out what exactly it is that I can do, or what we can do to just make it, make it happen. Because this is my livelihood, this is my father's livelihood, and I just can't let it die like that. I've got a lot invested, and just really anything I can do to make this happen.
Okay. Mr. Chambers.
Yes, sir. I'm Chairman of the Subdivision Committee, so we reviewed it with, and I think we had a problem with the irregular shape, so if you can change the shape to a regular shape, be five-sided, six-sided, four-sided, whatever, but a regular shape would go a long way to getting you approved, because it would be the minimum lot size for a commercial lot. And you could always plat, do a lot, subdivide the lot, a lot split, and then lease back whatever part the people need for the warehouse property, or the warehouse buyer could lease your land to you for 25 years. So, I mean, there's ways of getting around it that don't require us to build or approve an irregular lot, because I know you have an issue, and we really want to help you, because we like and support business, but you have an issue, and your solution is a permanent solution, so we would forever have a lot on the books that parts of it could never be used or built on or whatever. And if you no longer use the lot for any reason, five years from now, 50 years from now, that would still be an impossible lot for anybody to use. But if you create a regular lot that anyone can use, then we're more, I'm speaking for myself, I'm more than happy to approve it, because what you're asking for is a normal thing. It's just that really odd shape that we couldn't get over. Right. So if you can see your way clear to do a regularly shaped lot, and if the persons that buy the warehouse say, "Well, I don't have enough depth in front," say, "Well, fine, I'll lease you this piece right here," you know, for a dollar, for 50 years, or whatever, to make it easy. But there's ways of getting around it so that we do not have to agree to approve a substandard lot to keep you in business. You could, a little more inventiveness would, or even just plain squareness would really go a long way to solving your problem completely.
Right. So the issue with the, you know, there's the bayou there, slit bayou, that, you know, that's where the irregularity is at, you know, it, we had to use half the bayou, which is unusable land with the, you know, there's a...
But that's just it, sir. You can, you can plat a square lot in the corner, including the sign, and then turn around and sign a lease for a dollar a year for 50 years for the sign location, and if there's too, not enough depth for parking, you sign a lease to the adjacent property for the, to let them park on your land. But there are ways around it.
Right. I'm not sure that the seller, the person who bought the building, and is going to allow me to have any more of the property there. I understand you're saying that I could get into a lease agreement with him, saying that I need just more.
But you see, a lease agreement with him does not require our intervention at all. That's between you and him, and you just lease your building, or lease your building and some parking. Okay? And that's a lease agreement between you and another private party, not us.
Right. Well, I have a lease agreement in place, but that's not like the, that was not the main goal. The main goal is to, you know, I would like to be able to sell my business at some point, you know, I'd like to be able to just have that security of it being there, and that'd be my own piece of property, that, you know, we've had, we've been there forever, and then that would just secure my future. You know, this is, this is what I'm in. I'm in the barbecue business, and like, I've gone all in on trying to get this little square here, and I know it doesn't look right, and, you know, it may not be conventional, but, you know, I just really need this to happen, and...
We want it to happen, but you need to bring something to us that is within, see, it's not about you. We're creating a lot forever, okay? And so when you sell it, no one can build on it, because they're only going to have that little tiny building. Well, you may sell it, and someone wants to do something else, and here we are, having to approve a business, trying to, trying to shoehorn them into a lot that was some standard that we shouldn't have created in the first place. So you're, what we're, you're, you know, I, for one, will vote total no, and argue everybody to vote no against an irregularly shaped lot that's creating an encumbrance on the city forever, okay? If you want that shape, you can certainly sign a lease agreement with the buyer. That would solve the problem for us, because we're not involved in that.
Like, I don't necessarily want that shape, but in order to get the necessary 10,000 square feet that you required, we had to go out into the ditch and make that irregular shape. If my normal, if we just had the normal square there that didn't include the ditch and included the sign, that wasn't, was under 10,000 square feet, would you approve that?
Well, I was looking at the plan, and I could see one line from one corner.
Mr. Chambers.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to get in an argument.
I can answer that real quick. The answer would be no, because that lot is, would be unusable. So it has a 40-foot setback, and the lot's 60-foot wide or something, so there's no way anything can ever be built on it, once that building goes away. So we're, the city cannot create a lot that's unusable. So we're, we would basically be taking the rights away from any future development on that property. So by creating that lot, if it were to burn down tomorrow, you couldn't build it back.
Like, what if I agreed to that? Could we approve it?
But that's, but then, we've, now we've got a useless piece of property sitting on MacArthur that can never be built on.
Forever.
So, so we can't, we can't create a future encumbrance on the city of, an empty lot there forever. No one could ever build anything on it. So we need to create a lot that could be sold in the future.
I mean, I think it would be sellable to the current owner of the rest of the Reesers Building.
But that, that's not a guarantee. That guy could pass on or sell to someone else, and the next guy says no. So it's, we've create, we can't create something that's, for the most part, an illegal lot that can never be used. So it's the size of the lot. If you can make it bigger and square, it'd be fine, but just cutting the top front 60, 80 feet off the property, it creates an illegal lot that will never be able to be used, other than for what you have on it right this second.
Okay.
Okay, question?
I'm not on the subdivision. So he's been there for how many years?
We've been there for 28 years now.
Okay, and the objective is you're trying to buy this piece of land?
Yes, sir. I entered a contract with Reesers out of Oregon to purchase the whole piece of property. I was unable to secure the funds for that. I in turn sold the contract, and in return, I got my square that we paid to have surveyed off, and, you know, I got that, I'm able to buy that from him for a dollar. So now that would just secure my future.
Okay, and 3609 is headed?
Reeser Warehouse.
That's the old.
That's the old warehouse.
Their lot doesn't look very square either.
No.
No, it's not square.
So why did, why does it have to be 10,000?
That's, the audit says 10,000.
Now, but can we amend the ordinance to do that?
We could amend it, but it's still, unless he goes deeper, it's a useless lot, because of the setbacks of, from MacArthur being a highway. The buildings have to be set back so far. So we can't find any permit or anything that allowed it, but it's been there so long, I mean, that's not, not an issue right now, but if someone were to come in today, it'd have to be 40 foot back. And that rule was back then there too, but no one knows how it got put up front there. We couldn't find a Board of Adjustment Case or a...
Mr. Belasco.
This is probably going to be the dumbest question ever, but if he takes what he's thought that looks kind of uniform, and not this little dog leg here, okay, and then they come in here behind the normal shape and do a cross-access easement, so that this property uses it, he uses it, but nobody owns it, but that's on the plat, is that still illegal?
The... Sorry.
No, you're fine.
The setback for the properties right there.
Oh, bananas, okay. So I was talking here, take that off, and then right along here, form an access easement. Take this away, but that won't work.
It's a lot for some...
I see. But they're not going to let you do that, because then it's, okay. All right, got it. Thanks.
I just think, my opinion, since he's been in business, is that there's something we can do, and he just knows.
Well, at the moment, no, nobody's telling him to move. He's just concerned about the future. I mean, you don't know what's going to happen, who buys it or anything, so that, that's the...
Buy the, his land.
Correct. So the current, the current guy gets along with, but the next guy, he might not. So it's just the future. So he's, I mean, I understand what he's, he's wanting to own property, but it's, we got to create a lot that is legal.
And I understand that. I guess the issue is, though, if he's aware that if he buys it, he cut off that little dog leg, like Randy said, and he has that lot, and his building burns down, he just knows it's absolutely worthless that he, is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
He can't sell it.
He can't build on it, can't do anything.
He can't sell it.
As long as, as long as he understands that, then why do we have a problem?
Because he's not going to be here 50 years from now, either, either of us.
Yeah, but that's their problem, that's his family's problem. What I'm concerned about is his family.
We shouldn't be creating an illegal lot. So, so we've been given the authority to, you know, make the city better, and now we shouldn't be creating a lot that is useless.
But it sounds like we can't create a lot.
Well, it can be, but the seller doesn't want to do it.
That's something I'm saying.
Well, I don't think we should be, I mean, that's between those two, you know, it's not a city.
Mr. Chambers.
Yes, I was going to ask Mr. Mosley, our city attorney, to tell us whether or not we can create a substandard lot that can't be built on. I mean, what's, is that right?
Well, we have, you know, regulations for a reason. We need to apply them equally and uniformly, and that's my advice as that goes, and therefore I would concur with staff recommendation. Can you, I mean, you, the Planning, I mean, it would be, it would be in contravention of our own, you know, ordinance, so unless maybe the council were to act and amend that, but again, that's, I think that would be bad policy. I think, frankly, if you want my opinion, your recommendation to the gentleman is, is the, what he should do, and I concur with the staff recommendation.
Thank you.
Mr. White.
How many things do we have in the city, though?
As far as I know, none. We've never created a lot that was, so subdivision will get, back in the 50s, someone built a house back behind another house on a lot, and then goes foreclosure, and the new owner wants to cut off that back 30 feet of the property and use the alley as the main access, and we'd say no, because we, that's basically would be an illegal lot. And so every time that's come before us, we, the subdivision committee has said, you know, no, we can't support that. Yeah, I mean, your ultimate answer is, city council can do anything they need to do. So that's, that's ultimately your answer is what you were looking for. It could be done if city council wished to do that.
Mr. Chambers.
I may have a solution, and Sean and Mr. Mosley, if y'all have, tell me this won't work. Suppose he created a regular-shaped lot, cut the little pigtail off, just kept what he's got, it's unbuiltable. We all agree on that, because the building line goes too far into the lot. Suppose he took that little tiny piece of land left and filed for a PUD, a Plan New Development, on that land. He could then write his own building line, he could then, we could then put any kind of restrictions or specifications on it, he can put his, his conditions on it, and that way, he's creating something that's a PUD. And then in the future, people can come in and either ask for that PUD to be amended, it's right next to the creek, so it's not like there's any, any circulation hazard or anything like this, but this would create, by ordinance, a substandard lot with a reduced property line, with building line, and, and possibly preserve his business. Is there any discussion on that? Can I do that?
City council can do anything. So the answer is yes. Staff would not support it, as it's too close to the road.
I understand.
So, so, and so we, by doing a PUD, you're saying any building in the future can be too close to the road.
But that's just it. A PUD can allow stipulations, and it could be in the record that this is a one-time only, this is not a, a setting of precedent, et cetera, et cetera. Now, I know a good attorney can argue otherwise, but, but I'm just trying to find a way out, and at least that way, he can stay there. I know, for example, at the last council meeting, they approved a conditional use that was there for exactly two years, and at the end of that, it evaporates. Special use, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chamber, let me ask Mr. McCowen first. Is this in one or three? Ward one or three?
First.
Ward one or ward three?
MacArthur.
Ward three.
I believe it's one.
It's near your ward, isn't it?
I'm three.
Three.
But I don't know where my cutoff is, exactly.
Surely to goodness, it's three, it used to be.
I thought, I thought it was three.
Okay, then it is three.
Let me ask Mr. McCowen.
Yes, sir.
Have you talked with the, any, either one of your aldermen in your ward?
No, sir, I have not.
That, right now, might be a solution for you, to go talk to your alderman, tell him what you've got going on, and see if he would be willing to sponsor an ordinance to the city council that would take a recommendation from the staff, that it not be recommended, but him take it before the council to try to get it passed for you. You could do that, as our city attorney said, that council can do what they want to. So if you can get enough support on the city council, you could get that ordinance done that way.
Right.
Is that not correct, Mr. Spencer?
That'd be correct, yeah. So, no matter what, it's city council. So, a P U D city council or just waiving the whatever setbacks and that kind of thing would be city council.
Mr. Belasco?
I was just going to say, can we show it then postponed or continued rather than withdrawn? Or is it already, the gavel already fell?
Well, the, agent has withdrawn it, so, but we can, I mean, I'm not going to charge them to put it back on.
That's what I was trying, okay, fine.
It's not going to cost them anything to put it back on.
Okay, I don't think this, this application here would apply to anything in the future you might be able to do anyway. Is that right?
Same lot lines and everything.
It's always, he's not paying double.
Yes. Mr. Dietz?
Yes, sir. It's a Reese, old Reesers building, the old warehouse. I contacted Reesers because the building had been for sale for so many years and that was my biggest fear, that somebody I didn't know would come and they'd buy the building and that the least, you know, the best thing that would have happened, my rent would have went up. You know, the worst thing that they'd tell me is to get off the lot, you know, and I didn't like just everything being up in the air all the time. So, I took matters in my own hands and I entered in a contract with Reesers and got them to, you know, I got a good price on it and I would try, I almost had the funding for it and I wasn't able to come up with the cash, it was a cash deal. So, then I just started shopping it around to everyone I knew and at the last minute, I was able to come up with this deal with, on the back end, that I got this piece of property in return for the work I'd put in and the fees for the lawyer and the contract. I wanted to buy the Reesers, but I had big visions for, you know, revitalizing that whole area down there. I think it's coming, like eventually, that will all just be revitalized down there and I wanted to open up a big catfish, like even maybe like a brewery, like the Lost Forty or something over there. I've got like big plans, like Mick's is just the start of what I have planned for, you know, here in North Little Rock. Been, lived here my whole life and like I want, you know, I'm involved in the chamber and other committees and, you know, I want to invest, you know, not just in me and myself, but in the community as well. And, you know, I can't, like I just got, got to make it happen. Well, it's going to be as soon as we get this settled, because this is hanging over our heads now and I think that it will affect being able to sell the building. You know, if this new buyer comes in and, you know, say we've got this lease over here, you know, for a dollar a year or something like that and, you know, you know, it's not bringing any extra income to them or anything, so... Right now, Jim Harper, Harper Sheet Metal. Yes, sir. We've known them for years and it was a good, it was a good price. It was a good, it was a good investment. It was like, I mean, the building appraised for way more than what we paid for.
I understand.
Maybe some, but not the forty feet. Like, I can't have forty more feet from where the survey is drawn out now, because forty feet takes it almost to the building. You know, it's too, and that, and that's really going to affect him trying to sell it to somebody else. Plus, you had to have the certain amount of parking spaces for that size lot as well. But, we came into where he gave me the ditch, which is unusable, but, you know, that's kind of where we're at with that.
Okay, Ms. Chambers?
We've, we've been thinking about how to get more depth on the property. Suppose you defined a lot that was just twenty feet beyond the building line because there are no, if I'm right, in C three, there are no setbacks. Is that true? Not yard, but not a rear yard.
It's ten or fifteen. There is, there is one.
This is C four.
Oh, this is C four? I'd have to look, but there, I think it's minimal.
My point is that we can vary. You can get waivers on side yards, that's pretty easy, rear yards. But if you, if you drew out a lot that was wide, but not deep, but it gave you twenty feet beyond the building line. So, we're talking about a sixty-foot deep lot that's wide to get you to the minimum standard area, then playing off of your idea, Vandy, you could have a access easement across that lot where the driveway is. You would own the property, but you're granting an access easement, you know, to the, to the big warehouse. And that could be sixty feet wide if you want to, but that way, you have the technical square footage and the warehouse has access across it. As long as you leave about ten feet of frontage on MacArthur for the warehouse to claim that they front on MacArthur. I'm not thinking, I'm not thinking it's going to end up being a pipe there, Jim. I'm thinking it's going to take about half the frontage, okay? But I'm saying, there's a way of making it wide, not deep, if deep is the problem, and getting past the building line, twenty feet, which would be a decent sized building, we'd have a decent depth of a building or possibly. You could build on it anyway. I'm just throwing out ideas, trying to solve this.
Usually, for our public comment, we have allotted three minutes per speaker and I believe we've well gone over that. There's a lot of different scenarios you may do. I don't think that we can solve them for you here today, but you might get with Mr. Spencer or...
Why don't you come in tomorrow and we'll sit in front of a drawing and draw something up, show you what they're talking about with the access easement. You would own it, but the business behind you would have full access to it at all times and that would solve all the problems.
We're saying, you're saying from the road, I need to be sixty feet?
No, I'm saying work with staff. They understand my concept and they can explain it to you on paper.
Mr. Belasco?
And I can't believe I'm going to say this out loud and this advice is worth what I'm charging you for, nothing. But your idea for that property, I think, is fabulous.
Yes.
Have you thought about the SBA? They are there, Small Business Administration. They are there for people like you. They are there to help in these kind of conditions. If Mr. Harper would then allow you to have it all and you could work out something with the SBA and then you're in the big building and everybody's happy.
Yeah, they're not, they're not open right now, but good idea, great idea.
It's, and the rates are great, the terms are great, the paperwork is monstrous, but it's an idea.
And where is, is that a local?
Yes, well, you'd have to go through a bank, but you call a bank and tell them you want to talk to someone about an SBA loan. And I'll throw this out there, there's a new bank in town, Armor Bank, and they're up and coming and they might help you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chambers?
Question for Sean.
Thank you, Ms. Belasco.
Since this was technically withdrawn by the applicant, Mr. Butler, and the owner of the property, the person with the greatest interest in the property is not wanting to withdraw, do we need to move, postpone it or what action do we need to take to get it out of its nebulous condition?
He'll just be on the agenda next time if he wants it to be.
So, just ignore the withdrawal and go ahead?
Yep.
Okay. Very good. Any other comments?
Motion.
Motion made. The second, we adjourn. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Foesed, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.